This meeting of the school board of the city of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. And Mrs. McLeod is not here this evening due to a work obligation that she had to be out of town. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Rye.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody. Welcome to an evening of champions. To help us progress through the multitude of impressive recognitions, we ask that you hold your applause until the end of each recognition. Additionally, as a courtesy to all our honorees, we also kindly ask that you remain seated until the conclusion of all recognitions. Thank you for your help in honoring our outstanding students and staff. Without further, let's get started. Our first honoree is the nation's Navy Reserves Officer Training Corps, or NJROTC, Academic Brain Brawl champion, sophomore Scott Durkin from Princess Anne High School. The Academic Brain Brawl is an NJROTC event where teams compete against one another answering a series of questions covered in NJROTC curriculum, such as naval history, science, math, current events, and leadership. Princess Anne's NJROTC earned the right to compete at Nationals after winning the Academic Brain Brawl for Navy Area 5, which includes schools from the Mid-Atlantic region. In addition to the team event, each unit also selects one cadet for individual competition. Princess Anne High School's unit selected Scott, who outperformed all 23 of his competitors by answering questions like "What are the six traits of leadership?" and "Name the eight U.S. presidents from Virginia." So please join me in congratulating the nation's NJROTC Academic Brain Brawl champion.
State forensic champions. High school forensic competitions are not about solving crimes, but rather the art of delivering eloquent prose. Let's meet two of this year's state forensic champions. Kelham High School Ajaya Hawkins and Landstown High School Yarren Shabazz. Undefeated in competition this year, Ajaya won the state title in poetry interpretation for her passionate reading of "A History of Violence" and "Donors in the Hood," two emotional charged poems about hopes and dreams. Yarren is the state champion in serious dramatic interpretation for his reading of "I Am Not a Genius Black Man," a poetry piece that explores how our surroundings make us who we are. He is Landstown High School's first forensic state champion. Congratulations to these two outstanding public speakers. Let's give them a hand of applause.
We would not be surprised to see these next honorees on the TV show Shark Tank. Meet the World Series of Entrepreneurship Champions: Eben Bracy, Ben McLeod, Afton Mulkey, and Kristen Turner. These Kempsville High School entrepreneurship and business academy students created a mock business called Supply Hut, an online business to have supplies delivered to teachers monthly or as special one-time gifts. They developed their concept in the school's ink incubator class, which teaches students how to create and fully develop a product or service. This team even launched a website, promoted it through Twitter, and established a GoFundMe page. In the end, Supply Hut emerged as the winning team and was awarded $10,000. Congratulations to these future entrepreneurs.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Let's meet the state's indoor track and field champions. From Ocean Lakes High School, Davis Young, Tyler Lips, Brent Bailey, and Jacob Bushy. From First Colonial High School, we have Trey DeLong and Davier Bradshaw. On the track, Brent, Jacob, Davis, and Tyler captured the meet's 3,200-meter relay title with a time of 7 minutes 52 seconds. Pole vaulter Trey DeLong leaped a spectacular 14 feet 9 inches to win the state title in that event and set a new school record for First Colonial. Teammate Davier is the triple jump champion, which he achieved with an incredible leap of 46 feet 7 inches. Two weekends ago, with the outdoor track championship, he posted an even longer leap of 47 feet 1 and 1/4 inch. I don't see how in the world that's possible. Davier, I don't understand. That is so great. So he is our double state champion this year in that event. Congratulations to these top-of-the-field student athletes. Way to go, guys.
Our next honorees from First Colonial High School swam their way to victory. Meet state champions in swimming: Kason Wilborn, El Caldo, Sam Tatter, Olivia Tillett, and Kirsten Godfrey, who could not be here this evening. Kason, who went undefeated during the season, swam away with two titles: the 50-yard freestyle in 20.57 seconds and the 100-yard freestyle in 44.86 seconds. Meanwhile, the 400-yard freestyle team of El, Sam, Olivia, Kirsten tied for first in that event with a photo finish time of 3 minutes 30.77 seconds. El also won an individual title in the girls' 100-yard backstroke with a time of 55.42 seconds. Please join me in congratulating our swim champions.
They're back. First Colonial High School's debate team has won the state's debate championship title for the second consecutive year. Let's meet them. Sydney Cherry, Emma Jacobs, Reagan Hines, Alyssa Figuera, Jacob Wassinger, Zoe Molner, Carrie Cuthreal, Rachel Mantos, Evalise Ponceo... Pacheco, I'm sorry. Ian Ballmer, Caitlin Monastory, Dylan Schulte, Caleb Knox, Ally Hernandez, Brianna Cuffey, Colin Fogarty, and social studies teacher and debate team coach Erin Pratt. In addition to winning in 2018, this is the school's fourth state title in five years. They won the state championship in 2014, 15, 17, and 18. Students compete in four types of debates: Lincoln Douglas, which this year debated the topic of universal basic income; policy, which debated the federal government's involvement in K-12 education; public forum, which debated H-1B visas; and Student Congress, which debated various topics. Teams earn points in each event. Junior Caitlin Monastory placed second in Lincoln Douglas, while sophomores Dylan Schulte and Caleb Knox placed third in Public Forum. First Colonial also took all three, top three placements in Student Congress debate. Senior Reagan Hines placed third, freshman Colin Fogarty placed second, and senior Sydney Cherry placed first. This is Sydney's second state title in Student Congress debate. She also won her second Outstanding Senator Award, a recognition presented by fellow competitors in her chamber. In total, First Colonial earned 23 total points, far surpassing the 16-point second-place team from Northern Virginia. Congratulations to our four-time state debate champions, the team from First Colonial High School.
Congratulations. Awesome. Congratulations. Awesome.
Congratulations.
For our final recognition, the school board is proud to recognize our 2019 Citywide Teacher of the Year, Oldo Nation School Second Grade Teacher Melissa Follen. A teacher for 14 years, all with Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Follen grew up understanding the hard work and dedication needed to be a teacher, since both her mother and father also taught in our school division. "One could say teaching is in my blood," she said. But it's Follen's hard work and dedication that has proven her to be what her principal describes as "a student's dream." She loves her students enough to challenge them daily, support them through academic dissonance, and believe in them until they believe in themselves and realize their potential. Follen also earned her endorsement in gifted education and taught as a gifted cluster and a resource teacher. During that time, the Virginia Association for the Gifted Region 2 named her as the 2015 Teacher of the Year. Although she enjoys gifted education, she wanted to return to teaching third grade. She says, "I love the independence students are gaining at this age, but also the young children who they still are." Outside of the classroom, Follen is an active contributor with student, school, and community organizations. Please join me in congratulating this amazing teaching professional as our 2019 Citywide
Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Well, I'm excited to share with you our five things you need to know about VB CPS this month. Of course, at number one, this is a big week here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. It's graduation week. This week, roughly 5,000 graduates from our 13 high schools will cross the stage at the Virginia Beach Convention Center and receive their diplomas. Ceremonies will also be streamed live and available for replay on the school division's website. And of course, we want to encourage family members and friends to share graduation photos through social media using the hashtag #VBCPSGrad. Speaking of the class of 2018, I have record-breaking news to share. This year's graduating seniors have earned and accepted the highest scholarship amount of any VB CPS graduating class. As reported to our high school guidance offices, seniors have been offered a record $104 million in scholarships and have accepted close to $64 million to date. This is an outstanding achievement that honors the years of hard work and dedication from our students and their families. And certainly, having more than $100 million in scholarships offered to our community is a testament to the high caliber of student performance and teaching here in Virginia Beach and the degree to which that is recognized outside of our school division. Well done, seniors. At number three, we had the joy of hosting the 10th Annual STEM Trifecta this week. We had more than 1,000 students from 71 of our schools take part in this event, which was coordinated by the VB CPS Office of Technical and Career Education, and which is the culmination of a year-long initiative that engages students in grades K through 12 in after-school science, technology, engineering, and math activities. Featuring specific challenges in robots, makerspace, and cybersecurity, students showed not only their ingenuity, but also their skill sets and talents as they built, created, and competed in these events. Our special thanks to our TCE staff for their leadership in this event, as well as the countless volunteer sponsors and staff members who all worked together to help make the trifecta possible. At number four, the school division's 2018 summer school sessions are scheduled to begin Tuesday, June 26. As a reminder to our community, parents and students are able to register online for face-to-face summer school, high school courses via the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' web store through noon on June 26. On-site registration for face-to-face summer school, high school courses will be held at the summer school sites on Tuesday, June 19 from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. and Wednesday, June 20 from 8 a.m. to noon. For a complete listing of summer school sites and online course registration, our community members can visit vbschools.com now. And finally, at number five, this Friday will be the last day of school for our 2017-18 school year, if that's not hard to believe. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our incredible students, our teachers, staff members, and administrators for a wonderful year. To our seniors and to our retirees, we will miss you, and we wish you the very best for your future endeavors. And to our returning students and staff, have a wonderful and safe summer break, and we can't wait to begin our work again on September the 4th. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am, not on agenda items.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the May 22 meeting. Motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. The voting board is open. The minutes from the May 22 meeting have been approved. Mrs. Manning has asked that Item A, under the Consent Agenda, be moved to Action. Is that still a request? So we will amend our agenda this evening and move Consent Item A, which is notification of intent to apply for federal grants for school year 2018-2019, to Action Item D. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Mrs. Manning has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Rye. And the voting board is open. The amended agenda has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the items in the Consent Agenda that are left, and that would be Recommendation of General Contractor Plaza Annex Parking Lot Expansion, Oldo Nation School Dominion Energy Easement, and some religious exemptions that we had. Madam Chair. Yes. That was Item B, were correct?
Re-election.
Oh, the reelection. I don't know, I have that on here. Re-election list of 2018-2019. Thank you. Voting board is open. We need a motion. Mr. Edwards has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Now the voting board is open. The Consent Agenda has been approved. The first item under Action is Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. The chair will entertain a motion to approve Item A, Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Mrs. Holtz has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Weems. Is there any discussion? Voting board is open. The Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I would, thank you. And it's that time of year, so we've got quite a few to recognize. We'll start with, if I could ask Kamani Vaughn to please stand up. So you all will recognize, Ms. Vaughn, she has served as a teacher at Newtown Elementary School, Centerville Elementary School, an assistant principal at Pembroke Meadows Elementary School, currently serving as assistant principal at Brookwood Elementary School. And this evening, I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the new principal at Arrowhead Elementary School. I believe you have some guests with you.
I have my daughter, my son, and my guest, Victoria Vaughn.
Thank you for being here. If I could ask Robyn Backer to please stand up. You all should also recognize, Ms. Backer, she served in the division previously as assistant principal at Strawberry Elementary School. She took a year off and went to Massachusetts to become a principal and decided life was better in Virginia Beach. She has returned here, where she's been serving as assistant principal at Kempsville Meadows Elementary School. And I'm pleased that this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal of Christopher Farms Elementary School. Congratulations. And I believe you have a guest.
I do. I have a school.
Thank you for being here. Also this evening, if I could ask Andrew Flipowitz to please stand up. He's over there, very good. You all will recognize Mr. Flipowitz as well. He served in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Ocean Lakes High School, a teacher leader in the Center for Teacher Leadership, a school improvement specialist, most recently as an assistant principal at Independence Middle School. And this evening, we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as assistant principal at Kelham High School. Congratulations. And you have a guest?
Thank you.
Hi, Jenna, thank you for being here. If I could ask Caitlin Stravino to please stand up. Caitlin has served as a teacher, a teacher leader, in a number of different school divisions, most recently in Virginia Beach, teacher at Tallwood High School, school improvement specialist, and administrative assistant, and currently serving as administrative assistant at Ocean Lakes High School. And this evening, I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as assistant principal at Kempsville High School. Congratulations. I'd like to ask Adam Brown to please stand up. Mr. Brown has served as an associate teacher counselor and teacher counselor for the CSEP programs, most recently has been serving as the principal in the CSEP education programs at the Renaissance Academy. And this evening, I'm pleased to note that you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as next dean of students at the Renaissance Academy. Congratulations. If I could ask Sheila Jones to please stand up. Now, you might not recognize Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones has served in Texas. She has served as an education coordinator in Washington, DC. She has served as a program supervisor for pre-K through 12 education programs in adult and community education in Fairfax, most recently as the health and physical education specialist in Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm sorry, I take that back. She's served in that capacity. Most recently, she's been serving as the K-12 supervisor for health, physical education, adapted PE in Driver Head in Loudoun County. And this evening, I'm pleased that you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next coordinator of health, physical education, and the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. I believe you do have guests with you.
I do. I have my brother, Mark Jones. I'd love to find him.
Thank you for being here. And if I could ask Doris Wallo, Wilkins, McCory to please stand up. Now, I know that you all were recognized. Dorn, she has served as a teacher here in Virginia Beach at Luxford Elementary. She's been a coordinator of elementary curriculum. She's been a gifted resource specialist. Most recently, she's been serving as an instructional specialist in gifted education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. And this evening, I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next coordinator of gifted education in the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. You have a guest as well.
I have my husband, Kevin, and my sister.
I do have two other administrators I'd like to call to your attention. If I could ask Chris Buener to please stand up. So I think you all will recognize Chris as the coordinator of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy. Obviously, he's got a long career here in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Oldo Nation School, Luxford Elementary. He's been an administrative assistant and assistant principal. And I am very pleased that this evening, we are able to notify you of his reassignment to the position of coordinator of fine arts in the Department of Teaching and Learning. And one more that I'd like to acknowledge is Rianne Patricio. Rianne, are you here? She sure is. So this evening, we are recognizing her. She is currently the coordinator of the International Baccalaureate Program at Green Run Collegiate. She's previously served in the division as an instructional specialist in the Office of Gifted Education, and the Office of Instructional Service and Academy Programs, and also a teacher at Plaza Middle School. Recently, the Green Run Collegiate Charter Board appointed her as the next head of school at Green Run Collegiate, and as you know, you all have affirmed that decision. So congratulations, Rianne. We're getting some hugs, so I know you have guests.
My husband, my daughter, my son, and then my mom and my dad, my sister.
Thank you all for being here. Madam Chairwoman, that concludes... Just double-checking, that concludes my... That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Spence. The chair will... Under Item B in Action, the chair will now entertain a motion to approve the salary resolution for fiscal year 2018-2019, which includes the additional money we will be receiving from the state. So the motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. And I know we have Mr. Hansucker here to answer any questions that we may have for discussion, so is there anyone would like to have any questions answered or any discussion on this?
Do you want to just notify of the changes of what it is?
I think we'll read the resolution first. Mr. Hansucker, do you have that?
I can, yes. Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, school board members, and Dr. Spence. Originally, we sent a resolution that reflected what we had... You had approved in the original budget that was sent to the city. And it had a 2% pay raise for all employees. And that was composed of 1 and 1/2% cost of living adjustment, or a COLA, and a half a percent step increase. The state senate and house reached a compromise budget. We did not get the state's Calc tool until this past Friday, but we calculated what we believed we were going to get in additional money. That's been confirmed by our analysis of the state calc tool that we got. And there would be sufficient funds, it's almost $2.5 million, to provide an additional 0.41% additional raise. So the 2%, this resolution that you'll be voting on will be a total of 2.4%. The 1 and 1/2% COLA will be 1.9%. And the step increase is still 0.5. So the difference is 0.4% added to the COLA and the total. So the difference is 0.4% added to the COLA and the total.
Any other questions? Mrs. Weems?
Well, I just want to note that we were hoping that we would get some extra from the state. This is a tiny bit. And thank you for this resolution to help out our employees. And I know I called you earlier to make sure we could sustain this ongoing expense, and we will be able to, because it's from the lottery.
It came from, it's lottery proceeds, and those, as you know, don't require a local match, which is even better.
Right, okay, so that's great. Thank you so much.
And I just want to say that this is, approving this would be something that we had been saying all along, that if we got additional money from the state, we would put it towards salaries. And we are hoping to honor that. Let's see how the vote goes. So the voting board is open at this time. And the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Item C, under action. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the policy 1-28 for committees, organizations, and boards and school board assignments. The motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Is there any discussion?
Do you need to brief somebody?
Let me just, what we changed?
Yes. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Spence, I'm Kami Lynetti. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, we're going to be presenting the current amendments to Bylaw 128. We have kicked this bylaw around quite a lot this year, so the changes are not significant, but there are some things that we went back and forth on. Bylaw 128 has to do with school board committees, organizations, and boards that you internally create on there. One of the significant changes we recently put through was how you appoint the chairs for these committees. There seemed to be some confusion, different committees were done there. So throughout the Bylaw 128 amendments, you're going to see that the school board chair will recommend, when she recommends the committee placements, who the chair would be. But then the school board approves the chair for these committees. We've cleaned that up for all the committees, so you'll see that change throughout the document. There were a couple of formatting changes that we made there. Significant, and what was very important for us, was when we added the citizens advisory committees. We went through that a few months ago, the citizens advisory committees. That shows up again in this particular policy in 128, and we clarified some of that information. We took out some antiquated committees that we don't use, the joint standing committees. We haven't had any of those recently, other than the CIP Modernization Review Committee. Significant also, the change that we looked at last month, was on ad hoc committees. You had a provision for ad hoc committees. If you needed them, you could appoint them. The only one we've had standing was the ad hoc site selection committee. But we've also recognized that we haven't purchased a property, or looked for any property recently. So we made some minor adjustments to the ad hoc site selection committee. We'll be pointed as you need one coming up, and so it's not a standing committee. We've also made it clear that you can appoint ad hoc committees if you need them for a particular subject. We recently did that with the Achievable Dreams. So that's a straight ad hoc committee. We clarified some of the language as to who would sit on those committees. Section F is what we added on the different citizens advisory committees. And you see section two, they're actually list all the advisory committees. We were working through those policies the last month and the month before. They're listed out there. A little bit of clarification on that. We moved the deferred compensation board out to an outside committee, because that better reflected what that board did. They're not significant changes, but these were issues that we have noticed, dealing with these committees, we were having some problem clarifying that. We've gone through and clarified that. So a lot of changes, not particularly significant, but clarifying issues that have been a problem for us. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We can direct that to the PRC members.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Ry?
Just a comment to clarify that most of the committees, the practice of committees choosing their own chair remains, so it's unless otherwise noted. Just wanted to clear that up.
Any others? Okay, seeing none, the voting board is open. That motion has passed, so policy 128 has passed. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the notification of intent to apply for federal grants for school year 2018, 2019. Motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. Is there discussion? Mrs. Manning?
So first of all, I want to thank the grant committee for all your hard work. You guys did a fantastic job. I know that there's a lot of knowledge that goes into this, and a lot of hard work. And I appreciate that. I think you did a great job. There are a couple of line items that I cannot support in this. Title IV, Part A, I would have liked to have seen the safety and security going to something different, as well as, I don't think it's any secret, that I have had a request that we cut back on out-of-town professional development. And I don't believe that we achieved that in this grant funding with $170,000 that we're spending on out-of-division professional development. So I've spoken with Dr. Spence about this, and respectfully disagree with that decision. So that would be the reason I can't support the way that the grant is written now. But I do think that you've done a great job.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion? Would you all like to answer any of those? Okay, thank you. Oh, we have one, Ms. Riggs?
I just need to say something about the travel outside, you know, the travel. I think it's so important, as a teacher for as many years as I was, that is how we learn from others. I know we have a wonderful staff, and the administration we have here is just, there's no match. But we can always learn more. And being able to travel and share with other regions, other states, other parts of our state, other parts of the country, is how we bring back to share more. Because I don't think we could grow as well as we do without that. So I think it's so important, and I support that wholeheartedly with our, in our budget. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mrs. Melnick?
And I just wanted to say I'm thrilled that a portion of the grant funds will go towards our PBIS initiatives. That is an amazing program. It's not an overnight program, and I think that's important to note, that it takes years to build that up. But in our workshop tonight, it was referenced, and I'm just thrilled. And so thank you again for all of your hard work with these grants. Thank you.
Are there any others? Okay, seeing no others, the voting board is open. Okay. Action item D has been approved, has passed. Under information this evening, the first item under information is the community advisory committee appointments. And I'll read those to you. Tonight, we are pleased to present the outcome from the division's call to action to fill vacancies on citizens advisory committees subsequent to school board approved policy changes. Thirty-four applications were submitted with impressive qualities and attributes. After careful review, the school board discussed each application in a meeting held on May 22nd for personnel matters. Tonight, we bring forward our recommendations for those appointments. As your name is called, we ask that you stand to be recognized. We begin with our recommendation to appoint Elaine Britt to serve a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2018, on the advisory committee for technical and career education. Is Elaine here tonight? Okay. Well, thank you. Anyway, if she's watching, we thank you. There are three recommendations to fill vacancies on our advisory committee for gifted education for a three-year period beginning July 1st, 2018. Beth Dear is recommended to fill the vacancy in the Landstown High School zone. Welcome, Beth. Gerald Phillips is recognized to fill the vacancy in the Kellum High School zone. And Jennifer Kerwinski? Did I say that right? Was that close? Kerwinski, thank you. And welcome. And she's filling the at-large position on this committee. Thank you very much. Finally. Finally, appointments to the Special Education Advisory Committee are being recommended for a one-year term commencing July 1st, 2018, as that committee continues to finalize changes in their bylaws. That's why we made it just for a one-year term. So Leanna Landry is recommended to serve as the teacher representative. Is she here tonight? Okay. Cheryl Ward with Independent Center is recommended to serve as the agency community representative. Welcome. Thank you for serving. Six individuals are recommended to serve in a role as a person with a disability, or parent of a student with a disability, or as a student with a disability. Dawn Candia. Ainsley Proctor. Jill Reed. Tina Santi. Cheryl Smith. And Pamela Tanner. Thank you all for agreeing to serve in this capacity. And four individuals are recommended to fill vacancies in the other category. Sandra Herman. Dorothy McGuire. Donna Robel. And Frances Thompson. Thank you for agreeing to serve. That concludes the list of recommendations for appointment to vacancies on citizen advisory committees. We thank you once again for your willingness to serve. We will be acting on these recommendations at our next regular meeting on June 26th. Other informational items this evening include Three Oaks Elementary, Princess Anne Road, seven agreement of sale for conveyance of property. Welcome, Mr. Arnold.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, Dr. Spence. We briefed you a little bit in executive session. You have a resolution and a purchase agreement that will be on your agenda in a couple of weeks. We have a public hearing scheduled on the 26th as well. This is for the conveyance of 6,225 square feet of property on the Three Oaks Elementary School site. There you go, you see a picture, what's highlighted in green. A small utility easement, a little larger than 1,600 square feet, and a temporary construction easement. These takes are as a result of the widening of Princess Anne Road and the realignment of the interchange there at Princess Anne and Sandbridge. We will receive $33,153 as a result of this transaction. If you have to answer any questions that board members may have.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you.
And next, Mrs. Lynetti, when I'll explain the Policy Review Committee recommendations.
Too many policies, all right. The following policies have been recommended by the Policy Review Committee. On their policy 417 is a continuation of a policy that we were looking at finishing up our section four, has to do with personnel matters. They're just minor changes having to do with suspension of teachers. In particular, there seemed to be a need to clarify when we were doing investigatory suspensions, sometimes when we're investigating a teacher, it's necessary for us to put them out. We usually pay them. There are certain conditions in which we don't pay them if they are pending criminal charges. But if we're paying them with our investigatory suspension, so those changes have been added to policy 417. We've moved in on our work plan for the Policy Review Committee. We've worked into section five. These have to do with student matters. These are fairly significant policies. Important in these areas will be those matters having to do with student discipline. There is actually a law in Virginia that requires the school board to approve not only policies, but regulations having to student discipline. You will see a significant amount of these policies and regulations coming forward throughout the summer and the fall. Policy 5-3 has to do with formulation of student rights. This is one of your first ones. We are recommending repeal, not that we don't need these issues, we don't feel like this policy reflects what we have to do, that is already in other policies and recommendations. We found it duplicative compared to what we already had in policies. So the recommendation is that the school board repeal. Policy 5-C having to do with formulation of student rules and regulations, as they're also already handled in other policies. Policy 5-11 has to do with age of compulsory attendance and exemptions. It sounds like a long term. It actually has to do with when you have to come to school and truancy issues. These are fairly significant policies that we have to deal with. This policy has not been looked at in many years. It was necessary to add updates that are currently in the code of Virginia. This doesn't change our practice. We've been following these practices. We simply updated the policy to reflect what's actually in the law that's out there. And this in particular has to do with students that are in custody, that their requirement to go to school, and also how you deal with students past a certain age, having to go in and out of school. A lot of these old policies, we actually included all of the law in it. We have been systematically taking that out of the policies, because it's hard to keep up with the changes in the law. And so what you'll see at the end of this policy is removal, several pages worth of the actual law. We just simply cite to the law now, but that has been our practice the last couple of years. Policy 5-12 has to do with legal withdrawal from school. There are certain conditions in which you can remove a child who's subject to compulsory attendance from school. Also significant, of course, is the kindergarten age group, and we didn't change anything in this section. We just reflected some terminology changes on there. Those are not familiar with the fact, if you have a child, those five by September 30th, they're required to be in school in a school program. But there is an exception in Virginia that allows you for that one year to place a child out. There's some changes to that. We also just updated some of the language and took out duplicative language in here. And again, we've removed the code citations out of there, and just left the reference to the code section in. That is my last one. I think that's the last one. Those are not significant changes to these policies, but I will prepare you. You will see some very, very significant policies coming through in the next couple of months. These are very important changes that we have, but looking at. But those are the first section of section five that's coming to you. Are there any questions on these policies?
Mrs. Manning?
Could you tell me, and if you don't know it now, you can get it to me later, but the policies that were duplicative of the 5-3?
Off the top of my head, no. I mean, I know they are, just not quite off the top of my head, but they appear in the next following sections that come down in the five.
They're in section five?
Four, yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send those to you later tonight, Ms. Manning.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Mrs. Lynetti. Do we have any standing committee reports? Mrs. Weems?
Yes, last Wednesday, I attended the regional CSEP meeting, and we voted on the budget. And we have a, there's a YouTube of the strategic plan, and then a five-year plan. So if anybody wants that, I can send you the link for those. And then also, this morning, I attended the CAC meeting, and they were very anxious to find out about the committee. And I just told them, I said, "You're going to have a great committee, and we're going to announce it tonight." And look what we did, announced a great committee for them. So that's all the news I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Melnick?
Last Wednesday, I attended the Governor's School Regional Board meeting. And speaking of scholarships, the Governor's School received, or accepted, $9 million in scholarships. And just a special thank you to Dr. Spence for attending the graduation last week. It was amazing. It was beautifully done, nice and long, and really, really proud of those kids. And proud of the work our school district does with Governor's School. In the past, you kind of gave up your right to your high school when you became a student at the Governor's School. But now, students are able to still participate in our academies and the Governor's School, work in which I'm really proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Mrs. Ry? Sorry.
I just thought it's worth noting that the policy committee will continue to meet this summer, with the next committee meeting being July 12th.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items this evening? Okay?
We'll transition to that portion in just a moment.
Okay, so that concludes our formal meeting at this time.